Public衒 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 Counselor Kadeem?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Carrera?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Repouzo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion open to public hearing.
Motion open to public hearing has been made.
Second.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion made, second, all motion carries.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number one, Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Inc. for one new jointly owned pole location and one jointly owned pole relocation as follows: on Fifth Street, one jointly owned pole location, and on Spring Street, one jointly owned pole relocation. National Grid is proposing to install one jointly owned pole, pole number eight dash one slash two on Fifth Street, in line between Pole Twelve on Rodman Street and Pole Eight dash one on Fifth Street. National Grid is also proposing to relocate Pole Nine on Spring Street, ten feet northwest of the current location. Pole Nine will move up against the sidewalk, curbing, and away from the building located at five five seven Spring Street in accordance with Plan Number Three zero eight eight zero one four three. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Come on down, please state your name, now just for the record.
Good evening, Senate Counsel. My name is Aaron Roy. I'm representing National Grid, twelve fifty Brayton Point, Perroden, Somerset. This job on Fifth Street and Spring Street is a load relief job that we're proposing. This ultimately will take load off our underground system and move into our overhead system. The new pole we're requesting on Fifth Street will allow us to run new overhead conductor from Rodman Street down Fifth Street, taking the overhead customers that have fed currently underground from underground transformer over to our overhead system. As for the pole relocation on Spring Street, this pole, typically you see our poles up against the curbing on the sidewalks. This gives us clearance from overhead wires from any buildings or houses that are up against the sidewalk. This current location of this pole is inches away from, it's been like this for a while. It's probably like a foot away from five fifty seven Spring Street. This will allow us to relocate this pole to the edge of the curbing and away from the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number two. Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Inc. for one new jointly owned pole location as follows: On Pierce Street, one new jointly owned pole location, beginning at a point approximately one hundred and eighty-five feet east of the center line of the intersection of June Street and Rock Street. Install new jointly owned pole number five dash fifty and install feeder monitors in accordance with Plans Number Three zero eight three eight seven two two. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Seeing one, come on down, please.
So for this second, the second job, this is a reliability job for National Grid. These feeder monitors, what we call feeder monitors, allow us to detect, see any faults or voltage loss, current loss on our system almost instantaneously. Often, the city doesn't really give us great locations, any pole locations for new installs, even on Pierce Street. So requesting this new pole location allow us to install these feeder monitors. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, we move on to item number three. It's a curb removal. Saint John's Holy Ghost Association, Incorporated, one nine seven five Pleasant Street, for the removal of curbing as follows: At nineteen seventy-five Pleasant Street and Field Street, existing opening is fifteen feet six inches. Curb to be removed is twelve feet six inches. There is no curb to be added. Combined opening proposed after alteration is twenty-eight feet. The parcel is currently serviced by a fifteen-foot-six-inch curb opening slash driveway on Fielden Street. The applicant proposes to extend that opening by an additional twelve feet six inches. The total opening for the location will be twenty-eight feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Counselor C. Two, do you wish to be a proponent, opponent?
No, I would not want to ask a question after you are done.
Okay. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, Counselor C. Two?
Do we know why they need twenty-eight feet versus the sixteen and a half they already have? Because that's the old Coughlin school.
It's fifteen and a half, not sixteen.
I'm sorry, what's that?
It's fifteen and a half feet they have right now.
Fifteen and a half now, and it's going to be twenty-eight when it's completed.
Correct.
But the, why they need that extra footage is my question. Do we know why?
I don't know why.
I do.
Do you, Counselor C. Two, maybe Counselor Vice President can answer that question? Counselor C. Five, Counselor Vice President?
The gentleman that is the running this, is in charge of this, felt that he needed it because the one on Fielden Street, there's not a lot of cars that park there, and if it was wider, you could have people going in and out at the same time. So that when they have different events there, it's easier for people to come in and park because the parking is in the back. And if it was wider, you wouldn't have cars stopping here for one at a time to come in and out. And that's what the architect felt would be a better thing to do with some of the bigger trailers and things that they have in there for storage, et cetera. That's what my understanding was, if that clarifies that.
Sounds reasonable.
The application give a reason why?
No. Clerk said no. Do you yield, Counselor?
I yield, thank you.
Does that satisfy you, Counselor Two? Do you have any other questions?
Yes. Do we, well, yeah, that's fine.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. We'll move right into finance. City Council Committee on Finance, please come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Kadeem?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Carrera? Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Repouzo?
Here.
Sampson? Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. There's no one that's signed up for citizens input time before finance, but there's one individual that's signed up for citizens input time right after the committee on finance. So we'll move on to item number two. It's a resolution, Committee on Finance, convey a discussion, funding an affordable housing trust, adopted on February fifteenth, and we'll hold discussion. Do you want to come down, please? Counselor C. Six, Counselor Ponti, it's part of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just wanted to let the record reflect, I had a great meeting with the mayor today and the city administrator, obviously with a purpose behind advocating for this specific initiative. And I'm not sure if the city administrator has done any additional research or has anything addition, but as a way of reintroducing the resolution that I filed, I want to just kind of bring everybody back since we have at least forty-five minutes here before our next meeting starts. I won't take forty-five minutes.
There is another item on agenda.
I know, I promise I won't take forty-five minutes.
We have as long as we need, Counselor.
But...
The night is young and so are we.
Okay. So the reason this came to my attention was, I've been following, I, when I was counsel president for a while, Counselor Kadeem and I, we would go to the MMA meetings at a regular basis. I enjoyed going to that, going into the different seminars that they had, and learning a lot about what other municipalities are doing, what other municipalities are doing good, and hearing from those leaders, and what other people aren't doing so well, where they can find areas of improvement for management inefficiencies. So I've been following the MMA through some subscriptions that I have, and what caught my attention on this affordable housing trust was how our governor appointed the mayor of Lynn to her housing advisory committee. And I kind of tried to dig in as to why she did that, and doing some research, the city of Lynn was very successful in creating and establishing a housing, affordable housing trust fund, which made me do some more research. Now, I believe Adam Chaplin, who was the former city administrator here eons ago, who is now, I think, running MMA now, I believe, or is the executive director there, has been advocating for this at the state level with other municipalities and other cities and towns. And I'm hoping my colleagues, as a result of last week's, our last meeting, had the ability to do some additional research on this. Now, I know there's a lot of questions, and I know when you hear affordable housing trust, it, people really don't understand what it means. Now, I want to just very briefly, bullet point, go over the reason for this, and I recognize that we need some kind of a commitment from the mayor, and in full transparency, the mayor did mention to me today that in terms of having the availability of one-time money, he just doesn't have the money available to him right now to start this fund. That doesn't necessarily mean that's the only funding mechanism for the affordable housing trust fund. So in high bullet points, what this is intended to do is offer an affordable housing option and opportunity for folks who need affordable housing. We all spoke during the election about a third, a third, and a third. We have low income, we have affordable, we have market rate, okay? I remember when I first campaigned for city council, we needed market rate. That was the new buzzword. We have that now. We strongly have an issue when it comes to the affordability of housing within a municipality, and Fall River has that problem. Now, this, if the city council can adopt this and we can find a funding source, the mechanism is intended to further develop affordable housing in each, in the state, which trickles down to each city and town. Is the city involved in decision makings by the trust? It's bound by public procurement laws, open meeting laws, conflict of interest, CPA eligibility, regulations and procedures. As a city, everybody wants to know who's going to oversee the trust. It will be, the mayor and the city council will appoint a board of trustees. The mayor would be the chairman, or his or her designee would be the chairman. If you're looking at a town, the select board would be responsible for allocating and distributing funds. The purpose of the initial funding for affordable housing is, the fund is to, now, everybody's asking me, how much money do we need to put in? And I know we had this conversation today in your office, Seth, but the fund intended in cities and towns to fund an amount similar to purchasing a lot in town, plus funds for holding costs, consultants, to prepare RFPs and housing needs and assessments. That is the main, intended amount. We don't need what the mayor of Providence did by putting ten million dollars in. Other cities and towns used Opera money, two, three, four million dollars to start it. Some towns use their stabilization account. Some use it within their municipal budget with free cash. And everybody's asking, well, if the mayor isn't going to be able to commit to money, and I respect the financial constraints that the finance team has, but CPA could be able to be a funding source. ARPA funds, which more cities and towns have used, city or town appropriations, private donations, I don't know how a city would, you know, I'm selling a house right now in Rhode Island that the, the trust, everybody passed away, the trust actually gave the property to the bank, so the bank can then go and sell it and give it to a charity of their choice. Now, I don't know if there's any of that happening, but if the city were to accept a donation of a house to sell, we would obviously have to go through the RFP process. This trust would essentially be able to manage it, hire a broker, hire a property manager, or sell it on their own. Another question people had, and I've done this research for the reason is, I'm really, I really want to see this get through. Is the Housing Affordability Housing Trust is responsible for using CPA funds only and is eligible for CPA eligible projects? The answer is yes, but if the project is not CPA eligible, you can't use CPA funds, but you could use it to start such trust. Can the trust sell property? Yes, they can dispose, they still have to follow public procurement thirty B, but they can still sell property. They can hold property, they can hire a property manager. Hundred and thirty cities and towns have done this, and I really want to urge my colleagues to advocate for this with us. Because if housing isn't one of the biggest issues facing this community and all across the state, I, with the exception of substance abuse issues and some of the other things that face communities, this is right along the lines of that. And we use a lot of money in Opera, and I know some of this stuff needed to happen, lots of money, lots and lots of money in Opera in Bristol County. And I just want to see us as elected officials advocate to try to put our money where our mouth is. We were all asked on the campaign trail, what are you going to do, candidate, to address housing? Well, none of us can do anything alone. We can't go create inventory, but this is going to address that middle section of people that need to move or are getting evicted and have an affordability issue. And it's not going to be something altogether, it's not going to happen overnight, and I commend the work Mike Deion's office has done with the mayor and Community Development Agency, but this is something that this community needs. Now, I asked the mayor, and I don't know if Mr. Aiken has the answer to this, but I know the redevelopment authority is sitting on millions and millions of dollars of funds, and I know they've probably been a little hesitant to work with cities and towns, or our city, rather, when it comes to repurposing some of that money for whatever they can repurpose it for, because I think they're trying to keep their dollars tight for the waterfront, which I understand if they get management of that, they probably need the money and the resources to be able to work that project. But I almost wonder if the administration hasn't changed their position from my private meeting with them today, is if we can have a joint meeting with the redevelopment authority to see if the redevelopment authority has a little bit of money and do some research on starting to launch something like this. So I wanted to, I'm sorry for that long-winded comments, but I was wondering, Mr. Aiken, if there's anything that has changed, or if you want to highlight any of this additional commentary for the public.
Sure. So just to fill everyone in on the conversation, Counselor Pont was gracious enough to come in first thing this morning, present the idea. I mean, it's an interesting idea, there's a, the Massachusetts Housing Partnership actually did a little pamphlet, it's about fifty pages. It's very, I think, well-done. I sent it to the city council clerk, who can distribute that if anyone's interested. I think it does summarize the thing pretty well. At this point, in terms of one-time money, whether that's money from the stabilization fund or any of the funds that the city has, or ARPA money, whether it's Bristol County or city ARPA money, that money is essentially spoken for at this point, or it's just not enough to make a significant dent in what we're talking about. The mayor is certainly open to this idea, not against it in any way, it just becomes a question of, I think it's been said in this chamber before, sharpening our pencils to try to figure out where the money might come from. The Mass Housing Partnership pamphlet actually does offer an interesting list of where the money could come from. That includes CPA funds, inclusionary zoning payments, negotiated developer fees, the general fund, of course, tax title sales, payments from special bylaws or ordinances, so you could conceivably put a bylaw or an ordinance in place that might put some sort of premium on market rate housing, that would require the developer to put money into this trust. I'm not saying that's what we should do, but that's a possibility, it's what other towns have done in my research, sell tower lease payments as well as private donations. So there's seven or eight categories right there of funding. We just need to look at all those and try to figure out if there are available funds, obviously subject to the will of the council and cooperation, collaboration of the council, if there's available funds to do that. So the outcome of the meeting this morning is not that we necessarily found funding sources, but we're going to look at funding sources. If the council's inclined to look at the publication and maybe have any of their own ideas on the funding sources, I think the more minds that are on this, the better. But it's something the mayor's certainly open to, we just can't commit to the funds right now.
And I want to, I want to confirm what you said. He didn't shut me down and say, sorry, Cliff, we can't do it. He's open to having a discussion, he recognizes the issue. He also highlighted some of the success that the Community Development Agency has had with rehabbing some buildings and doing what they needed to do. I don't even know if this is a legal thing, it's just something that came to the top of my mind, you know? The council is often tasked with ties and TIF approvals. And I'm also wondering if it would be possible that if a individual or a group of people who are getting market rate housing, and they're getting free, you know, no taxes for installing, building market rate housing, if there could be a fee structure set up by the council that would require a one-time payment in lieu of getting a TIF or a TIE that could specifically go to this housing affordable trust fund as a, as a point of continuing to replenish the account. I mean, the money doesn't necessarily need to come from the city's coffers, to your point. I think Nantucket did this, and what Nantucket did was, they have a real estate transfer tax fee, so if any out-of-town investor owns a property in like Cambridge or something, and they were to sell the property, a certain percentage of that, I think it's one percent or something like that, would go towards their land bank where they would use for the purposes of housing or whatever they do. We can also use federal home funds for this. I mean, there's so many other options, but I guess the biggest dollar, biggest bank account right now might be the redevelopment authority. And maybe it's worthy of having a meeting with them to see if they have an appetite to work with us on this.
So I don't have any information on the redevelopment authority's appetite, it's just, I just wasn't able to get with them today and, you know, have a conversation with people that could actually make representations one way or the other. I, I mean, I can certainly, you know, try to facilitate that conversation, we could create a joint meeting, whatever the will of the council is. One thing to know is that the, this particular statute that was created, I think first in two thousand and six and then significantly revamped in sixteen, is specifically for a hundred and ten percent of the median income in an area, which here is approximately ninety-seven thousand dollars, family income, depending on what, what charts you use, but I think that's a, that's a relatively recent number. So we're not talking about, you know, low, low-income housing, we're talking about affordable, that middle third.
Point of clarification on that. So your statement was the average, median household, household income in Fall River is ninety-seven thousand?
No, so it uses the house, the housing and urban development standard of a median income in an area, so it's not Fall River, it's a region. So they put it at eighty-nine thousand dollars, it's probably less, significantly less here.
What's Fall River, do you know?
I don't know. I, the last number I heard was that, was just above like fifty-three thousand, but I don't think that's a current number.
Sorry about that. Okay.
Yeah. So there's, how much money do we have left in Bristol County money? Do we know?
Hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
And what's the plan, what are we planning on doing with that? Any idea?
Will the council.
Okay, so the council has the ability to start that, the trust with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars unless that's already allocated to something else, do we know?
I don't know for sure, I just know what the balance is right now, just having looked at it recently and talked to Attorney Hum about it.
This isn't directed at the mayor in any way, shape, or form, but I'm just going to say, there's been lots of pet projects that have been done by utilizing Opera and Bristol County money, okay? Lots of feel-good, lots of projects that needed to get done, splash pads, beautification, those kind of things. And I'm not saying that didn't need to happen, but we have a housing crisis in this community and all across the state. And I think we need to start really thinking about investing into trying to have a short-term impact on this. We can't build more housing projects with the housing authority. That's not something that we have the capability of doing, but we have the opportunity to work with this, try to establish this, try to move this forward, and to try to do, address a housing problem. If we were having a homelessness problem like they do in other cities like Oregon or Seattle, or any of these other places where you're walking down Main Street and walking around tents, we would be all sitting here trying to find an issue to address it. We have an epidemic on our hands, and it's on the cities, it's a city's responsibility to start working, and that's what we've been elected to do, work on trying to find funding mechanisms to get this launched. And I have no skin in this game at all whatsoever. This isn't for any kind of other reason for me and for real estate or any of that, I have no interest, don't care about it. I want to see that this community puts our money where our mouth is and tries to find ways to put, address a, a housing issue, which is, it's serious. And I don't know if there's any other way that we can start this. We don't need eight million dollars, we don't need what Providence did at ten. I'd be happy with starting it with something so we could at least get this to the Attorney General's office for approval so that we can establish this trust.
I think the one thing I will say in terms of the mayor's thinking about this, and it always comes back to a regional approach rather than a city approach, because at the end of the day, we're twenty-five percent affordable without question.
Yeah.
If you look at all the subsidies, we're actually closer to forty percent affordable. Every town around us is three and a half to four percent affordable. So if there are other towns nearby that have additional skin in the game, and we can approach this regionally, I think that seems to always be where the conversation heads, because there, you know, Fall River, I think... heads, because there, you know, Fall River, I think, certainly does its share, and certainly more than its share, and we try very, very hard to meet the needs of people
No question.
who have needs. And that's, that's a priority of the mayor. I mean, I don't know, really, any politician I've ever met who's at the homeless camps as frequently as he is, who's at First Step as frequently as he is, who's trying to deal with people who are ordinarily and traditionally underrepresented as much as this mayor does. But I do think that there's got to be a regional, at least a focus, a thought regionally, and that's something that the mayor has talked about, because the towns around us are not really, certainly not trying to meet the need in the same way that Fall River is.
No, I agree. And we are carrying our share of that. So, I'll allow my colleagues to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor T. Ford. Councilor Kilby?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, a lot of questions got triggered. Councilor Pont, you know, asked most of them, but I think he's really hit the nail on the head on this issue, I really do. So, what, how much research have you done, Mr. Aikens, in terms of what would it take the community to get this started? At least, and I know you said regionalism or regional approach. Well, we're talking about regional approaches to trash, we're talking about regional approaches to, you know, housing now, we're talking about regional approaches to, you know, a great many things, but, I mean, that doesn't give us, as a community, much time. It doesn't really address the issue. We talked about regionalism when LNG was here. We talked about regionalism when Lambert was mayor, fair share and all that, so. But I think this legislation was passed for a reason. So, the first question, I'm not too sure of Councilor Pont, and I think he's on to something here, I really do. I've researched as much as him on this. So, what would it take to at least get this started? And what benefits would the city derive from it? And, I mean, I'm looking, it's a long question, I'm sorry, a long-winded question. So, we have low-income housing in the city, then we have, right, we have affordable housing. Now, we have market rate housing. Market rate is not affordable, obviously. I think, I think there's three categories here, and there is a housing shortage, so. So, I guess the narrow question is, what would it take to get this off the ground? If it's important on a part of this council, and I'm going to support this to get it going, what would it take?
That's a really subjective question. There's actually a number of things that a trust like this could do, and I don't know that I would, there's probably five or six different categories, whether it's everything from constructing brand-new housing to rehabilitating existing housing to creating access to housing. So, I don't know that I would venture to speculate on what it would actually take without more information and people smarter than me doing the research.
Okay, so in anticipation of this meeting, and this has been put on, thank you, Council President, for putting it on so quickly, but I don't know how much research the administration has done on this and how willing they are to look at other, you know, to look at this program. Like you said, the ARPA money's encumbered, and I believe we have, a resolution was filed, maybe Councilor Dion, or forgive me if I'm wrong, with regard to a breakdown of how all the ARPA money's been spent. We didn't have any say in the federal ARPA money. We have a say in Bristol County ARPA money. But that thought has crossed my head quite often over the last number of months, especially with the debate over the Armory. So, I'd like to know exactly what projects were funded. I know a great, great deal went to Mr. Faola's office for business stimulation.
Most of that came back, Councilor.
It came, okay.
Yep, yeah, a lot of those grants were given, but a lot of that money came back.
Yeah.
And then was re-distributed.
So, I'm just super, I just really am excited about this idea. I did do some reading last night for about an hour on this. It seems like communities our size are kind of grabbing onto it. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just letting Mr. Aiken know that I
Can you speak into the microphone?
I was just letting our city administrator know that I know the finance, the CFO in Lynn, so I can call him to find out some more details.
Yeah, that'd be great. And the may, point of information, if I may, Mr. President, sorry, Councilor Kilby, but to answer our colleague's question, the approval process to make this official is you need the approval of the bylaws. And it's not, this isn't long, so I'll just read it if I can. If a city or town after the municipal legislative body votes to adopt the trust, the clerk must certify the bylaw. Once certified by bylaw, must be submitted to the Attorney General's Office. In a city, the bylaw does not need to be certified before being sent to the AG's office. The AG needs to review and then approve. And then after that, you establish the Board of Trustees, then you declare your trust, and then you start raising capital for it. So, it needs to go through ordinances, the very next step, to answer his question.
Okay, thank you so much. So, I won't go on much longer, because I think this is not going to die here. It's going to go on some further debate. Hopefully, it's on a quick path. And if this, we have, I'm sure we have some seed money to get this started, especially if it's going to benefit the community in light of what Councilor Pont stated in terms of a crisis of affordable housing. Every time I hear Governor Hilli open her mouth and give a speech, she, that's what she said, affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing. And it is a crisis, so, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'll just, I mean, I have no problem making a phone call, and we can collaborate together
Okay.
to get some information.
Okay, I was tempted to call the assessor down, but I had a later date. I think that can wait, because he's here for another specific reason. But I think it'd be nice to, the next meeting when we discuss this issue, to have him down so we can get an analysis somewhat, and it's probably long overdue, of units in the city, what's available, what's not available, what buildings are condemned, what building, you know, it's just, it'd be nice to get it, his office, the assessor's office is totally linked, obviously, with housing in the city, and they have the data to be able to provide this council with a more educated decision, Mr. President, so. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor T. One, Councilor Kadim?
Thank you. I was going to actually ask similar questions to Councilor Kilby. So, my question is just in terms of the process, and Councilor Pont had kind of articulated it, is there any issue from the administration in terms of starting to go with the process of establishing the trust fund and then figure out the funding mechanism at a later point?
Yeah, I don't think there's any resistance to starting in terms of the trust res, you know, what you actually put into the trust. We just can't commit to that at this time. But in terms of laying the groundwork, which is going to take a little bit of time, I don't think the mayor has any objection to that at all.
Okay, because, you know, I believe the resolution does have this going to the Ordinance Committee, so I would say that the first step should be to establish the trust fund, send it to the AG's office, and we can, we can move on from there, and then collectively work on ideas in terms of, you know, how we want to see this funded, and get the various stakeholders to the table in terms of options for additional funding. You know, I think Councilor Ponti has articulated some creative ideas in terms of trying to fund it, so I just think we need to look at it and identify what the sustainability is of this trust fund, and how we're going to, you know, kind of reimburse everything coming into it, so that it's not just a one-time deal, but it's a trust that's having money coming in various points throughout the years. So, with that, I'll be supporting it, and when it goes through ordinance, I'm on ordinance committees, I'll support it there as well. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor T. D., Councilor Sampson?
So, I think it's, I read up on this thanks to my colleague Ponti for giving me his one and only copy, the copy that he had at the time, but, you know, I do, I have some questions of, who is this benefiting? I guess I need this explained to me on like a third-grade level, because is this benefiting the builder, the developer, or is it the buyer and the renter? This trust, like, who is, when I was reading it, it was, it was a lot of legal terms, a lot of real estate, your, you know, stuff that I think the common person like myself that's not engulfed in that world understands. So, I'm just trying to figure out, who does this trust benefit? I can understand, you know, affordable housing is a key word, and, you know, I don't know if you consider this a pet project. I don't, I think there's a lot of projects that went out that weren't pet projects, but this is a great project to look at. But I keep in mind that Fall River, our residents, we do our part. We are, for affordable housing, it's recommended that we're at 10%. We're at at least 25%, and in some cases, we're at 40%. So, I do like the idea of a regional approach, but can we do better in Fall River? I mean, we can always help and do better, but I do, I need some questions. What does, who does this trust benefit? Is it a trust where a developer can, you know, go ask money to put down, to develop a project? Or is it, I'm a first-time home buyer, I need, I love that idea. I need some funds to help put a down payment on a home, and they can go to the trust and ask for it. Is it someone that needs help with rent? Is it, what is it? I'm just trying to figure out who is benefit, benefiting from this. Is it a developer, the contractors, or is it the people that are buying? So, that's my question here. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor T. Two, Councilor Dion?
Yeah, I'd just like to, some clarification. So, when you made the statement, we're at 30% or 40%, other communities are only at 2% to 3%. Our 30% to 40% is low-income housing.
So...
It's not affordable housing.
Low-income, so 25%, 25%, right? So, the 40% is if you add subsidies and everything else like that. So, that's when you start getting into affordable. But in terms of low-income, it's 25, 26%.
Right, so I just don't want anybody to be under the impression that 30% of our housing is affordable housing, because it absolutely is not. If it were, we wouldn't have people lose, getting, moving out of their apartments and living in the streets who can afford to pay rent. And I think that's what, I'm, my interpretation, and Councilor in seat six can clarify it if I'm wrong, that's what this is all about. Affordable living space for people who can pay rent, but they can't pay the $1,500 or $2,000 a month, and they don't qualify for the low-income housing, which is what Fall River has been really good at. The people who cannot afford the rent. Would that be a correct statement? So, I just wanted to clarify that, because I think people get confused, it gets lost in the conversation. It's a big difference. We have people who were paying $1,000, or say, yeah, $1,000 a month rent, the landlord came down and say, "Listen, my property's waterfront, now it's $1,800 a month." Where do they go? Those people are who would benefit by affordable housing, because they can pay the $1,000 a month, or the $1,200 perhaps. I'm definitely fully in support of this, and I hope we can get it moving sooner than later, because we have a lot of people, we have senior citizens, we have families, we, it involves many people, not just one group of people. And I think this would benefit substantially. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Is there any other question for, could it, Councilor?
I did, I'm sure I did.
Councilor T. Five, Councilor White, Senator Pro.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions about this. You're talking about, you know, a Board of Trustees, a broker, a manager, construction personnel. Are these people going to get paid? The Board of Trustees, do they get paid? Who oversees them? Is it going to be the city that oversees them? I did have a meeting with the mayor, and actually, Mr. Dion as well, talking about this program and what else can be done, because I know in trying to assist people with housing and affordability, I've had talked to Mr. Dion several times, and, you know, I did get a rundown that there were three other couples that purchased a home and got the $10,000 first-time buyer from Mr. Dion's office. Peckham Street, Bradford Avenue, there were three, three deckers there. Those are now affordable. That's through Community Housing Resource Board, which is basically doing what I think this trust is going to do. 64 Durfee Street, we had an investor. There's 11 units there. And some of that money to develop that property, I believe, came from the Mass Housing Partnership, which is kind of the same venue. Murray Street, Community Resource, another three apartments. The Preservation Society on 95 June Street that was turned over to Preservation. There's four affordable units there. Tobin Street, there's another seven affordable units there, and that's from Community Housing Resource. Donley Street, Whipple Street, Linden Street, Warren Street, Pleasant Street, Hood Street. Some of those are investors. They're three units to eight units to one unit. So, I think we're trying to do that, and I did, I was in the mayor's office, and I believe, maybe Attorney Aikens can help. How many properties have we now gotten cleared through Mr. Thomas that are going to be coming back on, that we can, you know, sell to somebody, or that can be turned over to a nonprofit to do affordable? How many were there? Six? Five, six?
It depends on what time period you're talking about, but yeah, you're right around that.
Well, it was last week, so.
Sure, yeah, in the last, right, in the last couple of weeks, there's been quite a few that have come back on from tax.
Quite a few that are coming through. And all of those can be given to these partnerships who, these nonprofits that have that whole board to oversee that. Not that I don't think Councilor Pont brings an idea to the table, but I really need to have more information. Of course, I know, as we all do, we need affordable housing, but I just wonder, you know, who are all these people that are going to be involved in this, and what are, what are they going to do? Do we pay them? Do we not pay them? You know, are we going to have another department to oversee this? I'm not sure how that's going to work. And when I talked to somebody, they said if you bought, let's say that you bought a three-family, or a six-family, you bought a six-family or a three-family, you bought a three-family for $500,000. You bought another one for $500,000. Okay, so there's $1 million. Now, there's three apartments in each, those six apartments. By the time you look at what it costs to purchase the property and what it costs to renovate all of the properties, they gave me a ballpark figure of $200,000. Not a contractor, don't know if that's accurate figure or not, but if that's the case, if you're
Councilor, just point of clarification, $200,000 to accomplish what? To remodel the apartments?
To purchase and to renovate bathrooms, kitchens, whatever, to do all renovations. How much is that going to be per unit for that individual to now rent out? So, if you're going to take $2 million to put into this, how many units is that going to give us? I'd like to know the answer to that. How many units does that give us? How quick does this move along? And it may be something that moves slowly, but at least we're moving in the right direction. And I do understand the city's finances, and, you know, where we have to look at what is the best use for whatever money is left in ARPA or Bristol County ARPA. But when that money's not there, I think Councilor Pont brings up a good point. What other resources do we have to keep replenishing it? And I think Councilor Kadim said that, too. I just think there's a whole lot of questions, and I would feel comfortable knowing some of these answers before I even voted on something like this. I think it's a great idea. I mean, we can move it along, but before this is adopted or finalized, I'd like to know how this works, because I'm under the understanding, people that I talk to, that a lot of these trusts are done more in towns than they are in cities. Why is that, if that is?
Well, maybe I can, point of clarification, that, really quick.
That's why there's bylaws that get established, and secondly, that's why it's going to go to your committee to answer all those questions.
And who does the bylaws?
Or
The Board of Trustees? Or the council does bylaws? Because I certainly don't know how to do bylaws for this. Or does it legal?
Just point of clarification.
I mean, I don't care if it's my committee, it can go there.
I just wanted to help out with the
Point of clarification, Councilor T. One?
No, so, bylaws are ordinances for the towns, so when you're in the city, it's an ordinance, so it's just, we've got to put together an ordinance
Yeah.
to establish this trust fund. I just want to clarify that.
No, I agree. And, Councilor, it's like everything else we do for the first time, there are always going to be a lot of questions.
Exactly.
There's a lot of uncertainties, but those are all explained in committee and ordinance. We're an attorney present that will research, if he doesn't know the facts of the case, research and come back with the answers and establish how to do it correctly. The state's going to be involved as well. It's a, it's a, it's a process.
Yeah.
And you're very well aware that things like this take
Take time.
You're not going to probably do it in one ordinance meeting, probably not going to do it in two ordinance meetings. But it's a good alternative to what we're doing now. In addition to what we're doing now, all the things that you mentioned are fabulous and great. This is a different avenue to do more of what we're doing with different sources and different revenues, and have more of an oversight at the local level, as I see it. But I could be wrong, but that's how I see it. But we'll get those answers.
I mean, I don't have a problem with going to ordinance committee, and I think making a motion for it to go there as a next step is a wonderful thing, but to say, yes, I think this is a good idea, let's just do it. I'm not at that point
We can't do it, Counselor, it's part of the process, we're going to, we, no one's going to ask you to vote for it today and get it done today, it has to go, there's a process in place.
And I'm fine with that. But these are some of the questions that I have, and I have tried to, you know, research and look into it, and called other communities to see what they're doing, talked to some people. Um, but anyway, I, I do think we need it. I think it's a good thing to bring forward and for us to discuss. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to, prior to calling, some of the councils have already spoken, I'm going to call the ones that haven't spoken yet. Counselor seat seven, Counselor...
It's a B.B.
Yeah, my, my only comment is to simply echo what, what Sean said, it's, it's a great step forward, it's a multi-pronged approach, dealing with the problem we have. And I'm on the ordinance committee myself, and I'll support it as well. I think it's excellent, so, does it require a motion to refer at this point?
No, we have other consequences.
Great, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor seat three, Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, I'm not to sound redundant, but everyone's already mentioned, but I congratulate Counselor Potts for bringing this up. Um, I've got a lot of questions, um, and I'm, I'm certainly going to do it in ordinance, so I'll, if there's a motion to refer to ordinance, I will absolutely support it. Thank you.
Yeah, it, it already is in the ordinance, it's already in ordinance in a regular meeting.
I'm sorry, when it, when we have, but when we have the parties there and...
Sure. Yep. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Uh, so I just wanted to answer the question that Counselor in seat eight had in terms of breaking it down and who's, who's getting the money. So, essentially, it's, it's a, it's to subsidize the developers who would obviously be purchasing this property, you know, developing, uh, the housing, they obviously want to sell it for a profit. So, to be able to subsidize it to make it affordable so that when they're selling it, they're still making a profit, but selling it at a, a lower cost to the individuals that are purchasing it. So, so if you just look at it from a subsidy standpoint, that, that's essentially what's taking place. Um, and I, and I will just say, I, I think from a concessional standpoint, this is a great idea, but to your point, you know, the, the devils are in the details, and that's what's going to be worked out in ordinance, and there's going to be a lot of conversation coming back and forth, um, because obviously you've got to establish, um, a board of trustees to oversee the trusts, um, you know, the trust is, you're able to invest the money uh, in the trust fund, so obviously the, uh, you know, the treasurer or the finance director needs to be part of that, because they're going to be responsible for, for any type of investment that goes on. Um, and obviously, we want to make sure that we establish that whoever's on this, this board of trustees, that, um, you know, there is some say in terms of who that is, um, and that there are some municipal employees that are, that are going to be on part of, part of that to make sure that they're overseeing, uh, everything from, from the, the city's standpoint. So, um, from my standpoint, it's just another tool in the toolbox, and we can, we can, we can work that all out and then figure out, and I think the big piece is, is where's the money going to come from?
Yeah.
Um, and how do we establish this trust fund? So, you know, Counselor Ponti did mention that it's, you know, the, the suggestion is the initial cost of, of a parcel, and, you know, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a parcel, or two hundred thousand dollars for a parcel. I mean, that's, I guess, what the suggested cost would be, uh, just for the parcel, and then if you have architectural services, it's a little more than that. But I think essentially you want to get it to, to the millions, right, to build up the trust fund, to have that ability to, to provide the, you know, affordability standpoint. And, and I'll echo, and I know everybody understands this, um, and it's not unique to the city of Fall River, but the city of Fall River is not affordable, right? And even though it's probably one of the more affordable communities in Massachusetts, uh, when you start looking at Massachusetts as a whole, um, you know, rents in Fall River are close to two thousand dollars, and that's, that's mortgage payments for, for a good majority of people that have bought homes prior to this, um, you know, the, the market just increasing. And, you know, for, for a family of, of ninety thousand, I don't, I don't know how you pay two thousand dollars, uh, just on, on, you know, a rent and try to go out with all the other additional inflation that we're having for food and groceries and things of that nature. Um, so we really need to, to identify how we do this, it's, it's not just a Fall River problem, it's a, it's a, uh, a state problem, it's not a, a national, a countrywide issue. So, um, if we can, if we can get ahead of the curve, uh, to Counselor Ponti's point, so that we don't become, because we're, we're starting to get there, but we don't want to become the Californias or the, uh, you know, the, um, Oregon's or the, or the Washingtons of, of the worlds where we're just having all these, uh, homeless, uh, individuals on streets. And, and if you go to Portland, Oregon, or if you go to Seattle, or if you go to San Francisco, they are legitimately on sidewalks, um, and you've got to walk around them. So, we, we've got to figure something out, uh, we've got to make sure that we're, we're making our city affordable, right? We, we talk about that, and, uh, gentification is going to be taking place at some point with all the development that's coming forward, so we just need to be able to protect some of the individuals that have always called Fall River Home, and make sure that there is at least an affordable market or aspects to the city of Fall River while we are also attracting, um, you know, market rate housing and, and those, um, families that come with market rate housing. So, we, we've just got to be cognizant of that. And I, I don't disagree, you know, from, from a regional standpoint, um, we've got to get other communities to, uh, start having those conversations, and I think a lot of it's coming, coming through the, uh, MBTA community, uh, requirements, you know, if you're an adjacent community, you have to have this housing, uh, but there's a lot of be, a lot of pushback that's, that's going on. There's one community that has already voted not to, to, uh, move in that direction, I know this, uh, potential discussion of funding being withheld for that community, but there are towns that don't want to partake, uh, in any discussion about the affordability portion. And I know Fall River and Gateway Cities have always been, uh, the communities that had to, to shoulder that burden. So, and that will continue to be the case, uh, but we need to start having these conversations, and we need to really try to figure out how to incentivize some of these other communities, uh, you know, these towns to, to really kind of deal with their share for the low income piece. Uh, but we need to figure out the affordability piece here in this, in the city. So, with that, I yield.
Can I get a point of clarification on that?
Yes.
So, when you have land, can, in this trust, can land, so if the city's taken back, um, property on taxes, does land can go into that trust? Does it have to be in a nominal fee, like money-wise, or can it also be property-wise to go into that trust?
No, uh, so they can, you can hold the trust, but the, the intent of the trust is, is not for the trust to be long-term landowners, right? It's just really for the transferal of that. So, you can hold it until you figure out how to transfer, or until it gets developed, or whatever the case may be, and then...
Find out what the use of the land's going to be.
Right.
And you could give it to a developer, they could develop, sell it at a, whatever, so they can afford to, okay. Thank you.
You yield, Counselor seat one?
I do, and I, and I will, I'll just say that the community that, um, voted not to be part of that whole MBTA community plan, uh, was Milton, and Milton right now is, is being, the governor is saying that they're going to be withholding funding from, from Milton, so it's a reality out there. So, it's a, it's a hot topic conversation, but I, I think we need to, to be part of the conversation and do something.
I agree. A lot of good points. One of the things I want to just clarify, we don't need to go to Portland, Oregon, just go to, take a drive to Boston, Mass Ave, McKeever, it's, it's tense in the sidewalk there, it's, it's everywhere, it's a mess. Counselor seat six, Counselor Ponti?
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of things. I, I, I want to just urge my colleagues, right, that want to, and I know this is a complicated issue, research it. Like, spend some time in research without making it muddy when it doesn't need to be, okay? A very quick read of the Lynn final ordinance clearly describes what the board of trustees did, and what they do, and who appoints them, and for how many terms, and if they get paid, right? So, like, we don't need to muddy the water in any way, shape, or form, read it. And if we're calling other communities as counselors, you could have read the Lynn ordinance, which dictates exactly what the board of trustees does, and how they fill vacancies, and who chairs the board, and who's appointed to the board, and all these other things. So, I, you know, it frustrates me if, if some people just don't want to see it go through and are already starting to muddy the water, and I'm not saying everybody here is, but spend your time to research the issues that we have. Mr. Akin, how many schools are we going to be taking back, or have we taken back already, that were sold to private developers that are going to be back in the city's hands?
So, there's two right now.
And you're going to be taking back one more, maybe? Maybe? Okay, so there's, there's the possibility others could be coming. I won't take you to that. So, we'll have schools that are sitting vacant right now, that we have no, I, I don't know if the city's not going to, maybe the city has plans to develop it. So, I, I don't know what the plans for with that. I also spoke with the mayor, he gave me the same sheet that my colleague has about all the things the Community Development Agency has done, and I highlighted their strengths and what they bring to the table and what they do. But if, if we have a new president that comes in and wants to cut funding from HUD to cities and towns because we're running into a problem, all those projects go away. We can't, we have to stop being reliant on HUD funds to do that. And a minor Google search could tell you that the state level is, is raining in expenses, and if you don't think the federal level is, who's been printing money for six years is going to do it, they're going to do the same thing as well. So, I, I, I want to urge my colleagues to spend some time, as my colleague in seat eight did, because I gave her the fifty-five page presentation last week, and read it, and you'll understand it. It, it, we, please don't muddy the water to the community when it doesn't need to be, because, and I think some people want to do that, whether it's intended for it or doesn't. It's a, it's a four, it's a four-sentence read on what the board of trustees does, if they get paid, I don't know, the park board doesn't get paid. The people who sit in, uh, on the charter commission don't get paid. Let's, let's not muddy the waters, and let's, let's focus on the initiative here. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. There being no further questions, oh, Counselor seat one, Counselor Kadim?
Apologize real quick. So, I, I know one of my counselors, I forgot who's, who mentioned it, that it was only mostly towns that were doing this. City of Boston's doing it, Chelsea's doing it, Cambridge is doing it, Franklin's doing it. Um, I mean, there are a hundred and twenty-eight communities that are starting to do this because they're recognizing it, so there's going to be more and more communities doing it, but it's not just towns, there's, there's large cities out there that are recognizing that something has to be done, so, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. There being no further questions, thank you. Actually, we'll move on to item number three, I entertain a motion to lift item number three from the table.
Motion to lift item three from the table.
Motion has been made in second, or in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is a resolution discussing the real estate taxes and exemptions with the Chair of the Board of Assessors and the City Administrator. It was tabled on January twenty-fourth, twenty-three, we'll hold the discussion.
So, the, unfortunately, the Chair of Assessors is under the weather and wasn't able to come tonight.
Oh. Can you guys just move those microphones down, so each will have your own microphone? There's plenty of microphones on the table, you don't need to be sharing.
It's hugging.
Thank you. Just state your name and what, what office you were, please, so we'll know, people at home will know who we are talking to.
Dan Lane, Admin Assistant to the Board of Assessors.
Thank you.
Bridget Allman, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you.
Seth Akin, City Administrator.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, Admin Assistant to the Board of Assessors means that Dan is the assessor, just for anyone who's watching. It's a strange name, and it's not clear to everybody.
Appreciate the clarification. Thank you, Mr. Akin. Want to start off and just, see, we had talked about this a year ago approximately, and we were supposed to do some research and look into what we could do for the residents out there who need this exemption? Want to give us an update as to what we've done so far, or what we're planning on doing?
So, um, myself, the, um, Chair of the Board of Assessors, and, um, our assessor, Dan, have spoken, um, and again, we've also spoken with Matt Thomas about this. So, we agree, we, we're going to do something. It's the, how, what we're going to do exactly is now with this mass, this empowerment bill that's in there, and there's some provisions within that that would allow us to do things specifically for certain groups.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. What's, what's it called?
The mass, the, the official name?
So, the Massachusetts Municipal Empowerment Act. Um, it's actually in the, there's a joint committee right now that's been bifurcated between, um, governmental services and, um, finance. And there's been hearings on it today, and there'll be hearings on it, I believe, tomorrow. Um, and it's basically a pretty major omnibus, um, act to empower, uh, communities to do a number of different things, uh, including extending bonds from thirty to forty years on school building projects and a whole bunch of other stuff, but it has some pretty robust measures in it with regard specifically to these type, um, of measures for, uh, veterans and elderly and that sort of thing.
So, currently, right, we now, if we were to change the exemptions, we would have to change them across the board. Mm-hmm. With this empowerment act, if, you know, whatever pieces, there's a specific one for, that we would be able to just do something for elderly exemption. And there's a specific one that would, um, a senior means test exemption, and then, so I, it allow, would allow us to do some specific things versus having to do something across the board, which we, we would be able to do a little, only a little bit for each thing. So, we want to see where this lands to come back with a plan, but we have a plan either way to do something. But I feel that, I mean, from what I'm hearing from, um, the council officer, I feel like it's the elderly that we want to try to, that, there's, there's been a lot of elderly that have, um...
Yes, for the most part, they will...
Yeah, so, we, we do really want to, we, if we, we, if we jump the gun and do something, we'd be jumping the gun instead of waiting to see what we're allowed to do if this, and our pieces of this pass.
I don't mind waiting to see, but how long are we going to wait and see before we decide to do something?
So, there should be action on this pretty soon. Just so you know, the, in the Municipal Empowerment Act, um, the significant change is that it allows a municipality to raise the exemption above the five hundred dollar mark, um, which right now, um, that's, that's where the limit is, I think, where are we, at two fifty?
We're at five hundred.
We're at the five hundred?
Yes.
Okay, so we could raise it up, uh, above the five hundred dollar mark. Uh, there's another important piece in the act that isn't really connected to this, but I think could have an impact on it, which is post-retirement employment, um, for retirees from the city. Um, so, it actually creates opportunities for a different kind of, basically revenue employment, um, for retirees and elderly people. So, there's a number of additional things that may actually alleviate the impact on the overlay, uh, if we were to actually put these in place. So, there's a few moving parts within the Municipal Empowerment Act, uh, and that's an imminent, um, if in fact it passes the way it is, we'll know in the next several weeks, uh, and then we'll have a sense of, the chance of passing. If it doesn't, uh, I think then we can move forward with, um, I don't want to say the status quo, but the, uh, what has been talked about in the assessor's office and, uh, the finance team.
Do you think they'll be able to take advantage of those, that, this year, or is it going to take over a year for next year?
So, in terms of, uh, putting it in place, I think it would have to be next year.
FY twenty-five.
Right. FY twenty-five is when everything would go into place, one way or the other.
Okay. Hey, Counselor seat, what was that?
Excuse me?
Oh, no, you were looking confused there, I was saying it would be the July bill, sorry.
Yeah, no.
Counselor seat two, Counselor Deon?
Um, yeah, I have the minutes from that meeting, uh, on January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and basically, it was targeted more at seniors. Um, obviously, we know the resolution is to discuss real estate taxes and exemptions with the Chair of the Board of Assessors and City Administrator. Um, in here, the CFO stated that there is not a database regarding assets, and it would be challenging to determine who would then become eligible if that limit was changed, because you were saying there's income and assets that feed into the equation.
Yes.
Um, Counsel Pereira asked that the administration work on creating a list of exemptions that Um, Counsel Pereira asked that the administration work on creating a list of exemptions that can assist senior property owners and present that list to the Committee on Finance for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget. Obviously, now we're on the twenty-five budget. And then, the last thing I want to note in here is, again, the CFO offered to come back to the committee with more information regarding income versus assets. Mr. Gonzo's, at the time, recommended that if increases were going to be pursued, the first increase should be on income limits, as those are easier to study. He stated that after those are raised, the asset limits could be increased a few years later, allowing time to analyze the estimated liability.
And, and we have, and we did, we've talked about raising the income limits by, you know, today we were even discussing it, you know, the increase to Social Security, we'd start increasing, it would just be an annual amount, whatever Social Security goes up, those income limits would, would rise with that same percentage. There's also, but in this empowerment act, there's a senior means tested exemption that would allow us to have a local option to grant additional property tax exemptions to qualifying seniors, and the criteria for the exemption includes owning and living in the subject home, having a durational residency and qualifying based on certain other income and asset levels. So, the, it seems that these exemptions are targeting some more, like, the elderly population, the senior population. So, again, I don't want to do something across the board and only be able to do a little bit for where the focus seems to be, the councils, you know, looking to try to do something for these, you know, lower income seniors. I don't know how long this, I mean, the governor's really pushing this, I mean, we were at the MMA, and, and everything I hear is she wants this to go and done, and they've already started doing the hearings. I mean, I expect it to be, we'd have, we know something in time for the budget, but again, we've already started working on this, and we, we will have something to you either way.
Um, yeah, because, I mean, with all due respect, a year has already gone by.
Well, there was another bill that ended up dying at the state level, that we were waiting on.
Because I also know that one of the concerns, assuming I state this correctly, was on the reimbursement.
We won't get reimbursed.
There's a limit to the reimbursement, so the concern was, well, if we raise this too much, the reimbursement won't be there, so now, it's not an offset anymore, now it's a liability on, as far as the cities coughers a concern.
And it will be, so we're not going to get reimbursed for these.
Mm-hmm.
So, but we have looked at our overlay, and we've looked at, you know, where we've been having to, to make adjustments, and we feel that we've got some room in the overlay, we've cleared out a lot of some of the old things, Dan's done a really good job, I forget how many we had.
There was forty-four ATB cases.
Please try to speak into the microphone, thank you.
There was forty-four ATB cases when I started, there's three now, so we've cut that down.
So, yeah, and so we, so clearing those out and cutting those down, we feel comfortable that we will have some room in the overlay to be able to fit some of this in.
Okay, um, I hope we can do this for the twenty-twenty-five budget, I will tell you, I have a woman who calls me periodically, she's, I believe, in her upper eighties, and every time before she hangs up the phone, she says to me, the last thing she says to me, "I hope I live long enough to see it." So, I hope we can get this done sooner than later.
Okay.
So, there is a whole list on the website of all the exemptions that we offer and instructions, it's out there, it's been on the website, under forms, just, you know, if you have anyone that.
That doesn't know about them or is looking for them.
Well, I think, you know, her, her interest obviously would be in an increase, because obviously, that, at her age, that's going to help her, her income is never going to get any larger, and, you know, these people, a lot of these people are hanging on by their, by their nails, and, yeah, it's, it's a sad state of affairs, that you had people that dedicated their entire life to the city of Fall River, and now they don't even know that they can even, there's people have already sold their homes, there's more reverse mortgages now than there ever were before, because they're just scraping and scrimping and, and just trying to live, trying to get by. So, with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor C. Five, Councillor Vice President, prayer.
You know, I'm a little disappointed that I filed this resolution a year ago, and now, we're only talking about it. And I have had conversations with Mr. Gonzo's about this, and it really comes down to the assets, too, because the assets are too low. And just like, you know, my colleague, Counsel Ponce, is looking at affordable housing for our community, well, I'm looking to try to keep seniors in their homes, because seniors are having a hard time to manage with the price of everything going up and taxes being raised, and this would have helped them. You say, you know, this empowerment act, and the governor's pushing for this, maybe if she's pushing for it now, something will happen. When are we going to have an answer for this? I, I'm feeling now, when I put in a resolution, that I have to put, you know, by such a date to get a response back, because sometimes, we file resolutions and they get lost in the resolution heaven, I guess, because we don't get answers to it. But when is this going to happen? I brought some people in, and Mr. Lang, I appreciate that it is on the website, and, you know, we've helped a lot of people with that. We also talked about people working for the city and getting money off their taxes, that was something that they were going to look into, or veterans that could qualify. But, you know, when you're, you own your own home and your spouse passes away, and now you're alone, living in that home, and I guess it's really hard to just get rid of everything and downsize or do whatever, that's a heartache for people, but now you're only getting that one source of income. When do you think you'll have an answer for this?
So, again, we, we have, we know how much money we can afford, we've, we've done that analysis, and again, with, with the, the significant reduction in ATB cases, because that was a lot of un, we didn't know, we had a lot of unknown how much that was going to cost. So, now that we've reduced so mu, so many of those down, and it's, you know, four left, what I will tell you, though, is that the population that you really want to target, if, if we're able, if these come through in the empowerment act, that's where we're going to be able to target. If this doesn't happen, then we're going to have to do a broad across-the-board on all the exemptions, which is not going to get to where, like, the one group that you want to help.
And we won't have the funds to provide all these exemptions to that many people, let's face it.
Well, we'd, it'd have to be like, so, for example, we looked at one, it would go up fifty dollars after the exemption, that's not going to help.
Right.
But this would allow us to do, to target, like, just, you know, seniors or, you know, and, and change some of these, the income limits.
The incomes, really, other communities have changed them, and we never have over the years.
Because you have to do them across the board.
Yeah.
And so, there's, that, that's what lies with the issue. So, I, I don't know, I mean, how long it's going to take, I mean, we can, we can talk to, to the, the bill, the empowerment.
Right.
I mean, I, all I know is that the goal is for FY twenty-five, but I, I don't know what that actually looks like in real life.
I'm sure we can follow.
Mr. Lang, you check on that occasionally while that empowerment bill is flying through?
Yeah, we've been talking about it regularly, I talked to Matt Thomas, and I just had a, an hour and a half session with the DLS about the empowerment act two weeks ago, so.
Something happens, could you just send out an email to let us know?
Could you please just speak into the microphone, please, just put it right against, there you go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you just keep an eye on it, maybe send an email so that we're all in the loop on that, because I, I get calls all the time, people having it hard.
Do you have a summary, do you have a, we can send you the section summary of the empowerment act, too.
Sure, that would be great.
The mayor testified before the joint committee today, so it seems to be moving forward.
Good.
Okay.
I mean, you know, people are struggling, it's not just Fall River, it's all over, you know, and I know that it's all over, but I don't worry about all over, or I don't have a control over all over, but I do care about this city, as we all do here, to get things, get things done as quick as we can. I hope that passes. With that, I yield, Mr. President, thank you.
Councillor C. One, Councillor Cadine.
Thank you, just a couple of questions, so, I haven't been following the, the act itself, but what, what level of income does it change?
So, it doesn't give you, actually, there's a local option, so it's not specified.
Okay.
So, that's where I need some more clarification on that.
Yep.
But what it does do is it allows the elderly exemption, so you could increase that one singly without having to increase all the other ones above the five hundred.
Yeah, because the income requirements, I, I think that's where a lot of the elderly get disqualified, right? So, it's just, it's so, it's such a low threshold, and if, if you have any money in the bank, then you're automatically disqualified, so that, to me, becomes the issue. So, if the act is still going, and if there's options to change it, I think we really need to kind of jump on board with the local delegation to make sure that the income requirements to get these exemptions are changed, because it's just, it, it's almost impossible, like, the number of people that, elderly that should be getting these exemptions, they do not qualify because they have some type, they either have a pension coming in, or they've got a bank account that has money in it, which is, sounds ridiculous, but they don't, they don't meet the requirement, so I, I think that's, that's the real issue that we've got to, we've got to drive. And then, I guess my second question is, in terms of, you, you mentioned the overlay, how much overlay are we putting in on a yearly basis from the, from the taxes?
A million one.
A million one? Okay.
And you know that we have to, there's a five-year average that we have to pay attention to.
Yep, and then, so I, I just wanted to make sure that that was going in, so, obviously, you said forty-four overlay, I mean, abatement cases?
Well, that was ATB cases, so this year, we had a hundred and forty abatement applications come in.
Settle that, and then, so you only, the ATB cases are, are down to four now, you said?
Uh, four, yeah.
Give or take.
Yeah.
All right, perfect. Without a yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. There be no further questions, I thank you all for coming down.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Assessor, great job.
We have one individual that signed up for city.
Motion to adjourn finance?
Yeah, we have one individual that signed up after finance, we'll speak, nothing vagas, subject matter, Durfee.
Like the shirt.
Very spirited conversation, absolutely, I do support the resolution as well. Um, you know, the Durfee debt exclusion is a hot topic, and as we know, a city councillor asked a question as to why it can't be put on the tax rolls when, back in twenty-eighteen, and this, this agenda packet here was back on twenty-eighteen by design, because the information that is printed into this was taken from this agenda packet at that time, and every single city councillor received that who was in the council, so that's why, you know, I heard Councilon C. Two referred to as twenty-eighteen, that's why, it's because that information came from that particular meeting. So, as you can see, as you move forward, so when it comes to the residential side for the annual tax increase, you know, it has an average here, but you can disregard that number, because as we know, with home values, they rise every single year, so every year, the average, it's not going to be the same. However, for every single hundred thousand dollars in value, it was fifty-four dollars per one hundred dollars, hundred thousand in value, and that's for the residential side. And as you move forward, for the commercial taxpayers, commercial and industrial, for every hundred thousand, it was a hundred and fifteen dollars per one hundred thousand in value. So, the administration, and this was on two, two-six, okay, and, and as you go, it talks about the total cost of the debt service, so that is the, for the property tax side. And as we know, last year, they gave the five-year budget projection, and this is for the municipal budget. Last year, they said it was five point four, then they settled on five point two, and then for this year, for this new five-year projection, FY twenty-four, they said it was four point eight. So, he's going down, and as you go to the next, to the next page, as, as you can see, it said that for the, for year eight, beginning of year eight, the numbers was three point six. So, and I provided the screenshot of what school committee member, school committee member Kevin Aguirre said, and he said it, that the voters were told that the total additional tax amount was three point six million dollars for seven years, starting in twenty-twenty-three. And back in February first, five years before that meeting, I provided the entire breakdown of that, of the debt service. And as you can see, the highlighted areas, that was the deal, and, and there you go, we're nowhere near four point eight. So, my question is, and before I get to that, you know, for added insurance policy for this, he sat down here and watched the entire presentation, so he knows what is going on. So, my, my question is this, why does he need an extra one point two million dollars for this? Because as far as I'm concerned, this line item is not a piggy bank to finance fiscal mismanagement.
Fifteen seconds, also.
Yes, sir. So, my thing is, is that when this budget, when this budget gets proposed, when you look at that line item, if it's four point eight, reduce that, because that is not what the people voted for, and now that you have the information, pull their feet to the fire, because this is what they told us a month before the election for the Durfee project. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Second. Motion to adjourn finance has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Finance is now adjourned. Take a two-minute break, if you want to keep going.
Everybody need a break?
Ready to go?
Go.
City Council, please come to order, go ahead and call the roll.
Councillors Cadine?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chair please rise for a moment in silent prayer? Please remain standing for salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, and may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is the mayor's request to accept the zoning map amendment for the waterfront and transit-oriented development.
Motion to refer to finance, second.
Motion referred has been made in second, on the motion, Councillor C. Five, Councillor Vice President, prayer.
Yeah, I.
Motion to refer to Committee on Finance, sorry.
Should it go to planning? Motion to refer to planning, second.
Motion to refer to planning.
Seconded.
Excuse me?
It's been there already, is it?
No, no, motion for fair planning is fine, motion for fair planning is made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, I'm sorry, I apologize, Councillor C. Five, Councillor Vice President.
I, I just want to add something to this, because part of this was that they couldn't build up in excess of six feet, six stories or something like that. But there is also something that many communities are using because of the housing shortage, et cetera. It's called FAR, the floor area ratio, so if you have parcel of land that's, you know, so many square feet or whatever, if you build on a smaller portion, if you build a garage underneath, if you have green space, if you have a water feature, different things allow you to go up a little bit higher, which is going to bring more investors in, and I think if we're looking at housing shortages, we've got to look for, for things like that as well. So, I guess when this goes to, to planning, it'll come back to us eventually, that I would like to see what this, see what other thoughts they have. I'm not too concerned with, with the overlay district, but just, what are they going to do with it, and how are they going to develop it? I think our waterfront is key, and I think we need to be very involved with a lot of the development that goes on there. With that, I yield.
I agree. Councillor C. Two?
Yeah, I'm a little confused, this came from planning, and it states on here that a public hearing was held on December thirteenth, a public hearing, the Zoning Board of Appeals was held on January eighteenth of this year, and it was unanimously voted to recommend to the city council the accompanying zoning map amendment. So, why would we send it to planning if it's already been through that process? I mean, I'm.
I had the same question.
Yeah.
The process for zoning procedures, that it come, they presented to the council first, and the council, within fourteen days, is to send, is to refer it back to the planning board for their recommendation, so.
Oh, so we have to give a recommendation?
No, no, we get their recommendation.
To get their recommendation.
Okay.
But it's supposed to be presented to the council first.
That's the classification, excuse me, Michelle.
No, that's okay. All right, that was basically the only, the only question I had, it just confused me when I saw that they had held the public meetings, et cetera, already. Thank you, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Councillor Y. All set? Motion has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for fair planning carries. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the For Youth Initiative was created in August of twenty-twenty-two to benefit young people with recreational activities funded by Bristol County American Rescue Plan Act funds, and whereas this program provides young people from low and middle-income households opportunities to participate in multiple types of extracurricular programs such as music, dance, boxing, and mixed martial arts, and whereas the For Youth Initiative also benefits the economic growth of small businesses who provide areas for these classes to take place, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance convene with the administration and the For Youth Initiative Coordinator for updates regarding how the Bristol County ARPA funds are currently being utilized within the program and how they will be used in future development of the For Youth Initiative.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Motion to adopt has been made in seconded, on the motion, Councillor C. A., Councillor Simpson.
I just have to amend it, because it actually didn't come out of the Bristol County ARPA funds, that's what was originally intended for, and then we had brought it back, and we, it came out of the mayor's funding, so if we can just adopt it and then just strike out Bristol County and just put the ARPA.
Motion adopted, amended. Seconded.
Motion to adopt as amended, has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we need to vote, Madam Clerk, one for the amendment and one to adopt as amended or not? Yeah, let's, let's do it the proper way so that we don't face another letter, and we have to send it back.
Motion to adopt as amended.
No, motion to amend would be appropriate.
Motion to amend.
To make the amendment has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion adopted.
Now, motion to adopt as amended.
Second.
Made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion now carries. Thanks, Councillors. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the city of Fall River is home to a great number of memorials, many of which honor veterans and fallen soldiers of all branches of the military, and whereas a recent event of vandalism of the Tu Iwo Jima memorial occurred at Veterans Memorial Bicentennial Park, and whereas the defacing of these types of monuments is considered exceptionally nefarious, and per Mass General Law, Part Four, Title One, Chapter Two-Sixty-Six, Section One-Twenty-Six A, those who commit these acts on a war veterans memorial are required to perform not less than five hundred hours of court-approved community service. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council request that Bristol County District Attorney compel the applicable court to approve community service specifically in relation to the repair, maintenance, and overall upkeep of all war veterans memorials within[1706.88] within the greater Fall River area for a person who is found guilty of this offense.
Motion to adopt, seconded.
Motion to adopt has been made in seconded, on the motion, Councilor C. Five, Councilor Vice President Pro.
Yeah, I did try to get ahold of the district attorney, Attorney Quinn, but every time I called, he was unavailable in court, et cetera, but my colleague, Councilor Hart, did see him. He is aware of the resolution, but one of the requests was that, where it says be it resolved that the city council requests the Bristol County District Attorney compel to put argue, to change the word compel to the word argue. So if there, if we could amend that to state argue rather than compel.
All seconded. Is the motion to amend has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'm just so furious that anyone would have marred the Iwo Jima monument or any monument in this city, and I'm so tired of things in our city being destroyed or ruined, and there's never a consequence for people's actions. I don't know who was involved in this, I did hear that it was juveniles, might have been, but they need to learn that you can't do things like this, and if the state law says you need to do community service, then at least that's a consequence. Maybe they need to go to a veterans' home and see some of our veterans, or maybe go to Wednesday's Kitchen and talk to different veterans. Do our youth know what veterans have done for us, given them the freedoms that they've given them? But that's the only reason, and because Councilor Sampson and myself are liaisons to the veterans, we talked about how many calls we receive from veterans with such an upset that we wanted to do something, so I thank my colleagues for the support. With that, I yield.
There you go, Councilor C. Four, Councilor Kabe.
Yes, just to add on to Councilor Pro, of course, we cannot support this, I mean, this is a very good resolution, so, I mean, hopefully it'll make the community feel better, I know I feel better, that it was introduced, and Councilor Hart, actually, before he made his call.
Makes me feel good.
Makes me feel happy.
I love it, I love it.
Yeah, so, you get it, everybody gets it.
We get it.
So, yeah, the compel, we can't compel a judge to do anything. The other thing is request, I would amend it further, Councilor Hart talked to District Attorney Quinn, District Attorney Quinn is, is well, well aware of the ramifications that especially something like this occurs. So request, I'd send it up, ask Councilor Pro to refer, you know, amend it, even further, send a letter to, to his office. It's, again, expression of our intent on the part of the council that, that consequences be, be paid to the fullest extent of the law, whether juvenile or an adult, to, to make the city whole and to teach, if it's a juvenile, obviously we're going to teach that, that juvenile lesson, the government has to teach the juvenile judicial system, and if, if it's an adult, then hey, good luck, I mean, it's a whole different animal. So a letter.
Yeah, part of the process, she does receive a letter telling what the council did with the resolution, all in tax, so he'll be very well aware. We do know filing.
Okay, thank you.
No need to.
I yield, thank you, Councilor Pro.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Clerk?
Item four is the order granting permission to Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England, for one jointly-owned pole location on Fifth Street and a jointly-owned pole relocation on Spring Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five is the order granting permission to Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England, for one jointly-owned pole location on Pierce Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item six is the order granting permission to St. John's Holy Ghost Association for the removal of curbing at nineteen seventy-five and Field, Pleasant Street and Fielding Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the police chief's report on licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Motion to adopt, chief's report on licenses has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight are the applications for renewal of auto body shop licenses at one seventy Jefferson Street and three twenty-five Omen Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine are the applications for renewals of auto repair shop licenses at one seventy Jefferson Street, twenty-four forty-seven South Main Street, and ten thirty Twelley Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a number of claims.
Motion for corporation counsel.
Second.
Motion for corporation counsel has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eleven is an open meeting law complaint filed with regard to the City Council Committee on Ordinances and Legislation Meeting.
Motion for corporation counsel.
Motion for corporation counsel has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the Department of Public Utilities notice of filing and request for comments regarding the petition of Weaver's Cove Industrial Park for an exemption from minimum bridge clearance requirements.
Motion except, place on file.
Second.
Motion except, place on file has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on February twenty-seventh, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Counselor Sampson absent and not voting.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble has been made, roll call.
On the emergency preamble, Councilors Kadeen?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.